Please to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Is there anyone here for a two-minute open forum? Anyone for two-minute open forum? All right, review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, passed unanimously. Consent agenda items. Item A, approve 2022 seasonal and part-time salary schedule. Item B, approve 2022 union and non-union salary schedule. Item C, approve resolution on police administration collective bargaining unit, MOU for contributions to HSA. Item D, approve resolution on police officer collective bargaining unit, MOU for contributions to HSA. Item E, approve resolution on sergeants collective bargaining unit, MOU for contribution to HSA. Item F, approve resolution on maintenance worker collective bargaining unit, MOU for contributions to HAS. That should have been HSA. Item G, approve resolution on non-union collective bargaining unit, MOU for contributions. Item H, approve 2021 write-offs. Item I, approve 2022 goals and objectives. Item J, approve 2022 appointments. Item K, approve change order number one to the 2021 amphitheater east parking. Item L, approve electronic fund transfer and automatic clearinghouse policy. Item M, approve resolution regarding investment policy. And item N, approve resolution opting to increase the benefit level for firefighters.
I'd like to pull item H.
H.
I move to approve the rest of the agenda.
Second.
I will motion in a second to approve A through G and I through N. Is there further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item H, Vic.
Well, I just have a quick question is, it says we can't collect on those. What, what kind of effort do we go into to do that? I'm just curious.
We send out an invoice and, and then a statement, and if we collect, if we can collect through revenue recapture or certification if they own the property, then we will do that. But some of these that we're writing off are things that they don't own property, we can't collect, or some insurance companies where it was built to the wrong place, but it's still on our books, so we have to write it off. We try our hardest to collect as much as we can, and then we go from there. Sometimes they'll try to negotiate. I don't try to negotiate with them, but sometimes they just won't pay.
Just was curious, thank you. I move to approve item H.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Regular agenda items. Item A. Please take notice that the Wake Park City Council will hold a public hearing at Wake Park City Hall nineteen... Oh, we already did that one. I got another one coming up here. No.
Yeah, you have.
Monday, December twentieth.
You do for the public hearing, you're right. That's a fee schedule, sorry.
First. At six thirty PM. That is a fee schedule, ain't it?
Yep, you're right.
Thereafter, consider revision of Appendix B, Wake Park Schedule of Fee Charges. A copy is available at City Hall for review. All interested persons are invited and encouraged to attend or send written comments dated this second day of December twenty twenty-one. The public hearing is open at six thirty-four. Is there anyone here that would like to speak for or against that? Oh, I didn't hit that on a good time, did I? Doesn't want to kick the six thirty.
Yeah, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
I will motion in a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. The public hearing is closed at six thirty-five. What do we need to do now?
Approve.
Yep, you have the fee schedule that's before you. The, yep, the changes are have been published. They're here. If you'd like me to go through them, I can. Essentially, we're making some changes on the utility rates. Water rates are increasing from two thirteen to two thirty-three per one thousand gallons for tier one, tier two. Six ninety-seven to seven oh-two, and tier three, seven twenty to seven thirty. And then additionally, the sewer rates increasing, tier one, two oh-three, moving to two twelve, and tier two, moving from seven eighty to seven eighty-eight. The increases are, are really essentially due, due to the debt service on expansion and rehab for the wastewater side of things, and then the water ones are a result of operation and maintenance and debt service. In addition to that, proposed stormwater utility fee is proposed to increase from two dollars to two twenty-five per month. And then different parking violations have been titled differently, so we're just cleaning some of that language up. Yard waste permit is proposed to be increased from ten dollars to twenty dollars, and then renewal from five dollars to ten dollars. And so those are the summary of all of those changes, and the recommendation would be if there's, if there isn't any changes or questions related to those proposed fees, would be to approve the amending, amendment to Appendix B in the fee schedule.
I'll move to approve the twenty twenty-two amended fee schedule.
And then the summary publication too, if you don't mind.
Sure, summary publication.
I'll second.
Further discussion.
Um, Dave. On the booting amount. What is the total on a boot? I heard that there was some problems with that, or?
If we boot a semi, it's two hundred dollar fine or fee for a commercial vehicle.
Okay. They were only charged seventy-five or something?
We had, we had one, and that was a mistake. That was just kind of an officer's first commercial vehicle parking ticket, and they made a, made a mistake. They charged the wrong rate. That's been, that's been corrected, and, well, we kind of had to eat that one, but it's been, training's been done.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed.
Motion.
Passed unanimously. Final twenty twenty-two tax levy and budget capital improvement plan and gambling donation requests. My first one is the tax levy and budget at capital improvement. Yeah, okay, here we go.
Okay, so you have here, the twenty twenty-two proposed tax levy was certified in September, and then the final tax levy needs to be approved and certified to the county by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. The information, we've, we held a public hearing on it, we've held work sessions on it. Have you answered any questions related to that? If you have any additional, additional actions that we'll have to take, also include the five-year CIP and staffing plans. Copies of those plans have also been discussed and then are attached for your consideration. And then lastly would be the gambling donations, of which we did discuss as well, and kind of went through recommendations. So I'm.
Counsel, you got any questions?
Do I have to do them individually, or?
I need, I need a motion to do the tax levy for resolution, and in the same one, I could, we can do the twenty twenty-two budget for resolution on the capital improvement plan and staffing.
I'll move to approve that. I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously, and then I need one for the twenty twenty-two gambling donations.
So move to approve.
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. All right, item, item C, consider financial director appointment and administrative job description revisions.
Okay, so I tried to put all the admin ones all together to try to make it as clear as I possibly can, but with Keith Lindberg retiring as our finance director, we have gone through the hiring process, and the recommendation is to appoint Carla, oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
Appoint Carla Vernig as our finance director. She's currently serves as a city clerk accountant for the city of Wake Park. She currently is at a pay grade eight, step six, and the recommendation would be to move her to the finance director, pay grade thirteen, step one. And then as part of that as well, when we move somebody to a department head level position, their vacation accruals increase, and so in hers, we would recommend that hers vacation accrual move from six point six hours per pay period to eight point four six. So maybe I'll start with that. Does that make sense?
Sure, I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously.
All right, then the next step with that, assuming the role as a finance director, what we also want to make sure is that we went back through and adjusted some of our job descriptions to make sure that they made sense. The city clerk accountant, what we're proposing to do is change that title of this position to just a city clerk, and removing the accountant pieces of that, and adding in the licensing function of that position. And that would move that pay grade from a pay grade eight down to a pay grade seven, and changing points from three fifteen to two ninety-five. Additionally, what we would be looking at doing is the AP AR licensing clerk, that is the existing title for that position. We would be looking at changing that title to an accounting clerk, moving the licensing piece up to the clerk position as mentioned, and then taking the accounting functions and putting it into that. With that proposed change, there is no proposed change in pay grade or points. And moving forward then, the other changes in job descriptions, utility billing, media publications coordinator. There's just some updates as far as making her position more clear of the responsibilities that she does. It's just adjusting her points slightly, but not changing her pay grade. So points would be adjusted from one ninety-one to two oh-one. Administrative associate in building and planning, really just further clarifying that person's roles and responsibility in the job description, but the points and the pay grade remain the same. Lastly, the administrative secretary position, there are no changes as far as the, with the exception of the, I just realized that we did add some, some additional responsibilities for assisting with the data requests, and that has been incorporated in with that, but no changes to her current grade or pay or her points. The title changed from administrative secretary to administrative associate, just to make them consistent. So with that, what I would be, the additional actions that I would recommend for the council to consider would be to approve those job descriptions with the revisions as presented. And that would be the next action, and then maybe I'll stop there so I don't get everybody confused.
I'll make a motion to approve the job descriptions as presented.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously.
Third item for action under this would be, because we have a vacancy as, after appointing Carla as the finance director, we still need to have an official city clerk in place until that position is filled. So I think it would be important just to designate that for record, keeping purposes, her title as the official city clerk. That'd be one official, one action, I think that should be separate than the other.
Sure, so that's clear she's appointed.
Yep.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously.
And lastly on this, item four would be to authorize the hiring process for the city clerk position. And again, that would start internally, and then if there are no qualified internal candidates, it would be, it would go out externally.
Move to approve.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Thank you. Item D, consider police department job description revisions.
All right, one moment while I get to that one. Similarly, reviewing all the job descriptions here, just to clarify some of these things. So I'll just summarize the, the changes that were being recommended. And, and just as a point of clarification, all the job descriptions are reviewed by Baker Tilly, and the points and stuff are established with pay grades and stuff by that outside consultant, what makes sure that everything is consistent, and ensures that when we do our pay equity reports that are required by the state, that they're in compliance. So that's why this piece is very important. So police chiefs recommend, changes in the job description are really just defining the emergency management role that he plays. So no change in his pay grade, but does change points from six forty to, excuse me, six hundred to six forty. The police sergeant just further defines that supervisory role, and then that just changed points from three seventy point five to three eighty point five. Pay grade remains the same. The administrative assistant position further defined that role, particularly more in handling technology for the department and some of the state reporting requirements. This position was a pay grade five, two oh eight points, and it was recommended pay grade six, two thirty point five. These changes were made at the beginning with union contracts negotiated as part of this piece when we did our pay plan, and so those changes have already been implemented. Moving on to the patrol officer, it's just really changing that title from patrol officer to police officer. No changes in the job description itself, or in the pay grade or points. Similarly, the police secretary, it's only changing the title from police secretary to records technician, no changes in pay grade or points. And so those are the recommendations, and so the action before the council would be to approve those proposed revisions to the job descriptions.
Counsel, your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. And item D, consider public works job description revision and new water resource facility logistics tech position.
So in, in the public works department, the changes made here, excuse me, public works director further defined some of those responsibilities, largely the change in the oversight over the ledge amphitheater, but then also just clarifying some of the roles. And the change increased the points from five seventy-five to six thirty-five, and as a result, that would change his pay grade from a pay grade twelve to a pay grade thirteen. That would be consistent with the other department head level positions, and then the recommendation would be to move his position from that pay grade twelve to a max to that pay grade thirteen, step four, which would be effective if you, if you recommend those changes. If, excuse me, if you can, if you approve those changes, not recommend them. Public works supervisor, the job description was just really clearly defined to reflect more of that supervisory role and responsibility. The points increased from three seventy to three eighty, no change in pay grade. The facility event coordinator position clarified the role of having some oversight over the seasonal and part-time staff at the ledge. It changed the points from three twenty-five to three forty-five, no change in pay grade. Utility operator, just some minor changes that reflected training of other public work staff at the water plant. No changes in the, in the points or in that pay grade. For the senior maintenance, this position was retitled, recommended to be rechanged from the senior maintenance to a mechanic. It actually better reflects what this position actually does, and then the job description further defines the responsibility of the responsibility that they have with fleet maintenance and management, and no change in the points or the pay grade for that particular position. In the maintenance, proposed changes for that just further defined the role of weekly rotation for on-call. Other changes were minor. As a result, the points changed from one seventy-five to one eighty-five, but the pay grade remained the same at a pay grade four. And then why don't I do this? Stop that. Yeah.
Let's do those first.
That's what I was thinking. So if you're comfortable with that, the recommendation would be to propose, to approve the proposed revisions to the current job descriptions, points and compensation adjustments as presented.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. And.
The next. Yep, so we've had some discussion about this. We had this when New West was here, and then we did discuss this again as part of our staffing plan the end of November, where we, we created a position that we could address some of the needs that we had at the ledge with needing to have somebody working in the operations side of that, of, of the ledge. We also recognized that we had some, some needs in the water resource side of managing the regulations that go along with that. And so the position that is being proposed really does that. The position, the job description that we have put together as far as points, it is a one hundred and seventy-eight points and a pay grade four, which is what is the recommendation is. And this position could be paid for with the fees collected from the storm water and other, the stormwater fees that we collect. And then the remaining fees would be paid by New West. It is probably one of the most unique positions that we have created, but it does fulfill some needs that are, are needed in public works to address the regulation side of it, and then also addressing the need to have somebody consistent at the, at the ledge handling the facility side of it. And so I think I'll stop at that particular point and answer any questions that anyone might have related to that.
I guess what I'd like to do at this time is to ask to table this, due to the fact that on the other part of the agenda is the description for this job, which was not in our packet and got put in here this afternoon. Secondly, I think we need to talk about exactly what this position is, what it's going to do in curtail. We haven't had any official, we were just told that your, or this job description was going to be done. But I think we do, we should sit and talk about it a little bit to see exactly what this position is going to do, and what the duties exactly are for this particular. Which could be brought up at our next workshop. I don't think this is something we have to pass tonight. It can be done at our next meeting after being talked about for a period of time to see exactly what, what this position is.
Well, Mike, I think we talked about it quite a few times, at least three in my memories.
Never talked about this position.
Yes.
It was just told they're going to make this position, and that's as far as it got. Didn't go into details of what exactly this position is for, what the requirements are, why did they want it? Maybe some of those questions were answered very vaguely before, but this is something we don't have to pass tonight. This position can be passed at our next meeting if wanted. I'd just like to talk, sit down and let's go over it to see what, what this is going to cover, what this particular person is going to do.
I don't have a second, so somebody want to move to approve it? This is just a job description.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I'm going to second.
I have a motion in a second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Order one. All right, then we got another one to approve, authorize the hiring process for that position.
This would be to authorize the hiring process for that particular position, which we would do internally if we have an internal candidate qualified. And if not, then it would open up externally.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, order one. All right, item F, ordinance twenty-two, civil service board.
One second. So as far as making some of these changes with the job description, my recommendation with that, I, one, I had to clean up some of the language in the civil service with my particular title, but it would also be looking at adding the exemptions from civil service for the city clerk position in the water resource facility logistics technician.
Counsel, any questions?
No. Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item G, twenty twenty-two position and pay grade listing.
The only reason why this is on here is because it was hard for me to be able to approve this without having all the right titles approved first. So typically, this is something that we do annually, and you're, normally we'll see this on the consent agenda, but the order of operation made it such that we put this on, we had to do that after we made some of the, the title changes. So basically, what it just does is it just shows annually and clarifies what everybody, every position we have within the city, which every, and what every, what pay grade and the points established for it.
All right, counsel.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed, passed unanimously. Item H. Ah, we're not going to skip that one. Always sitting in the audience. I didn't see you, Jeff. I'm sorry, buddy.
Oh, shoot, oh.
Refuge agreement twenty, for twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-six.
Counsel in front of you, you should have the, the contract that was drafted out of the RFP. West Central was chosen to continue on with the service here. They've shown the ability to service our customers and the city very, very well, and so I'm happy to have them back in, in the fold again. This is a five-year contract going through twenty twenty-six. One item with, with the contract that you'll see in their table of charges is, it's a little bit of a change than what we're used to, where in previous contracts, West Central has given us an exact dollar figure every year. They chose to go with a CPI index, and I just want to refer to page three of your con, of the contract, and I wrote this up and discussed it with Jeff to make sure, because needed to clarify when we were looking at what that CPI index is and when, and for budgeting reasons. And so if you have any questions about it, you can certainly ask now, or ask me later, or Jeff, but that's the only thing that I did add into it was to clarify that since they had included that with their contract. Other than that, all the proposals, stuff that we went through with the RFP is included, just name changes and dates. And I guess I open it up, if you have any questions for me, I see Jeff's in the audience too, if you, if you got any questions, so.
Counsel, any questions?
No.
Won't get any answers anyway from Jeff, so.
I got a question for Jeff.
Uh-oh.
Uh, would you be interested in working with us on the biggest issue of this whole thing?
Mayor Miller, counselors, staff, residents of Wake Park, Jeff Bertram, West Central Sanitation. First of all, before I forget, congratulations, Carla, on your promotion. Started working with her back when we came, twenty years ago, I couldn't help but think when I parked in the parking lot, my headlights showing into the Bart's House. Herm, having done the garbage pickup and everything for the city of Wake Park over all these years, and, and then having worked with him over the years when he was on the council, it made me think of him as well. Twenty years ago, we were a good value. We're a great value today. We kicked the tires and had a nice opportunity to talk to each and every one of you. Obviously, we take this serious, and we wanted to continue with you, so we appreciate that we're going to be doing this for another minimum five years. To answer Counsel Erlinquist's question, something I was going to suggest is, what I'd recommend is that a couple of coun- something I was gonna suggest is, what I'd recommend is that a couple of counselors and some staff, we sit down, we start talking about what the community cleanup could look like and what your options are, uh, even before our work session. I think we should get into some of those details. Uh, we're kinda like the farmer's home insurance, uh, commercial. We know a thing or two, cause we've seen a thing or two. We do about 50 to 75 cleanups, a lot of different variations, and so we can help, uh, share with you what we do, what works, what doesn't work, and then ultimately, you're driving the bus, so whatever you decide to do, uh, we'll do. But do wanna thank the council, staff, the residents, uh, for having been with us for 20 years, and we look forward to many more years to, to come.
Alright, thanks, Jeff. Yeah, I think we'll have that meeting soon. I, I probably hoping in January, early part of February, because we need to get that information out to our citizens if we change that.
And, uh, mayor and counselor, again, it's your, your driving the bus. I'd recommend that you probably just stay status quo for the spring one, because that's a lot of change if you're gonna make changes, but again, that's up to you. But we, you could just stay status quo. On the first one, we've got the date set for 2022, both the spring and the fall, and then ultimately, we could start meeting in January, ready for looking if you're gonna make some changes in the fall. But the spring one might be a little tight to get the word out and everything, but again, you, uh, you decide. Thank you and Merry Christmas.
Alright, thanks, Jeff.
I'll go back to the, maybe?
Refuge agreement.
Second. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And item I, purchase snowplow truck and equipment, so we get it before 2044, I guess, huh?
Right.
See you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, um, counsel, I typically don't do this. I mean, I just adopt, approve the budget, and I'm asking to buy off of it less than five minutes later, but in, in this essence, with whatever's happening in this world with supply chain, um, large trucks, anything, it, it's all, uh, vulnerable. Uh, so I'm asking for, to go ahead and authorize that, that snowplow package. It has to get in queues, and the queue right now is late 23, and Pat told me this morning, it could be even 24. So it's just crazy. Um, and the money's gonna get expended over the, over at least two years, if not three now. We'll have to wait and see, so we're not gonna be spending money right up front, but, uh, so...
Okay.
Don't feel bad, Bill. Chief asked before the budget was approved.
That's right, you did.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I've just got two things, and they don't come from me. They're coming from me, but they don't come from me. One of them comes from a, a board member for Centra Care, and the other one comes from a doctor in the St. Cloud area. Please, 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 get your COVID shots. These facilities are overrun. They don't know what to do. Their facilities are full. Uh, I've talked to people that have been in the emergency room for hours, hours and hours and hours. If you're a COVID victim, I feel sorry for you if you're in there, if you've had your shots. I'm having a hard time reaching you if you haven't had your shot. But if your mom or dad or grandpa or your grandkid goes to that emergency room and can't get in because you were too ignorant to get your shot, I'm not gonna be very happy with you. So I'm passing this on from a doctor, I'm passing this on from a Centra Care board member, and I guess I'm passing it on from myself. Please do what you can to prevent this country from going backwards again. Alright, on a better note...
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Move to pay the bills.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Shawna?
I, I just wanna say thank you. Um, it's been a great year, and thank you for all of your work. Um, the hours that went into a meeting that got approved in a half hour is amazing to me, so I appreciate that, and just, um, uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Alright, thanks.
Do we know when our next council meeting is gonna be?
Oh, yes. January 10th. Um, I, I, just because of the timing of that, most of our, a lot of our department heads take off, um, over the Christmas and, um, New Year, so it's, in that way, it gives us a little bit more time.
Oh, that's fine. I was home for like the 20th.
I, yeah, I, I thought I was gonna try to get it later, but I am only trying to do one in January, though.
Okay.
So that's my goal.
That's good compromise.
Dave, you got anything? Yo.
I do. Um, Shawna beat me to it. I wanna thank the council for all the hard, good work that we did this year. We accomplished a lot of stuff and, uh, and the support. And with that, I'm gonna be taking the rest of the year off, so you won't see me until January 3rd, so I'm gonna...
With her without pay, Bill.
Well, you decide, but, mayor. No, I, I do seriously appreciate everything, and we got a lot more good things to come next year, so.
Great. Have a good vacation. Thank you. Chief?
I, I too wanted to echo Shawna and Bill's, uh, comments. Uh, you know, across the state, it's been a difficult year for law enforcement in many ways, and, and I just wanna, um, express my appreciation on the behalf of our department for the council's support over this past year. Um, we, we do feel supported, and it is very much appreciated, and, uh, so, uh, have a great holiday, and, uh, we'll, we'll see you next year.
Alright. Fire chief? There you go. Carl?
Thank you for the confident vote tonight.
You may not say, you may not say that next year at this time. I can see the pink slips coming. Alright, yeah, congratulations.
Very well deserved.
Paul?
Humbug.
Congratulations to Keith.
Yeah.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith, Keith snuck out on us. Uh, I figured he would. He snuck out on us, but he had 20 years here, and he's retiring officially the 24th. But the 23rd and 24th are holidays, so offici, unofficially, like, his last day is the 22nd, which is a couple days from now. Alright, anything else? If not, we are adjourned at 7:07.